Good evening. Welcome to the March 22, 2021, meeting of the Revere City Council. Please all rise and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Mr. President? Who's that? Counsel Rotundo. You know you're going to be on mute?
I just put it on mute. I was hearing the echo myself. I'd like to take a moment of silence for Jane Rizzo's father. He has recently passed.
Moment of silence. I think we had other members. We had other members. Oh, want to do the roll call first, Scott?
Roll call of the members, Counselor Janino?
Here.
Here, Counselor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Counselor Keefe.
Here.
Here, Counselor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Counselor Morabito. Here, Counselor Novoselfsky.
Here.
Here, Counselor Powers.
Here.
Here, Counselor Rotundo. Here, Counselor Sorino.
Here.
Here, Counselor Visconti.
Here.
Here, and Council President Zambudo.
Here.
Here, quorum is present. Calendar item number two, approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of March 8, 2021.
Mr. President, before we go on to the first agenda item, can I have a point of personal privilege?
State your points.
Last week, there was a shooting in Atlanta, Georgia. Eight Asian-Americans were shot and died at a spar. These shootings hiding worries in the Asian-American community is very important as city leaders to let our community know, especially our Asian-American community, that we do not tolerate any hate in our city. I think all of us on the city council can agree that there's no place for hate in our city. With that said, I offer a moment of silence for the victims of this tragedy.
Moment of silence.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. I think there were, did someone else had a point of personal privilege?
Mr. President, thank you. Patrick Keefe. Thank you very much. Again, this has been a challenging week for Revere. Obviously, as Counsel Morabito mentioned, this has been a challenging week for the country. But I think it's, we wanted to offer, the city council wants to offer their condolences to the Teta Viarella family. The city lost a wonderful woman in Gina Teta Viarella. She was the daughter of Patsy Teta, who was known to the city and his wonderful family. We've gotten to know, I personally have got to know her sisters, her children, and it's a big loss to the family, large family in the city that has always represented Revere very well. So I want to offer our condolences to the Teta Viarella family.
Moment of silence.
Thank you.
Roll call of the Journal.
Don't move.
On the motion, all in favor, all opposed, show voter.
Calendar item number three, hearing called is ordered on a request of the Revere City Council to change the name of a portion of Prospect Avenue to Prospect Place.
Any proponents? Proponents? Yes, give me the resident. Who is it? I'm expecting that the residents didn't know about the Zoom meeting, so.
Mr. President?
Counsel Keefe.
Thank you. A number of the residents were very vocal in reaching out to me, and I know a few had reached out to you. There's a letter that is into, has been entered into the record from one of the residents, Mr. Petricelli, pardon me, Mark, yeah, Petricelli from Prospect Place. A number of the residents, as mentioned, have reached out. I've spoken to all of the residents. This is something that they wished for and they want, and I think I spoke to, there's only a few houses on that street, as you could imagine, and all of them were in favor that we had spoken to, so.
Since we're, since we're in the, in the public hearing, I will also enter into the record that the Angel family, and I don't know the address at this point, but it's the first house, that's certainly in favor. But any other proponents, people in favor of this proposal? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents, people opposed, hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Counselors, now Counselor Keefe.
Apologize, I jumped again on you. As you can imagine, I'm very much in favor. All of the residents, there's only a few houses on that street, we're very much in favor of this, and it just makes the most sense to adopt it as it currently stands, rather than change it to make more confusion for future billing and future identity issues for them. So very much in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. This is obviously a public safety issue that's being addressed here, and it's been actually Prospect Place for some 13, 14 years. Of course, it's not on the books, and that's what we're doing here, is correcting the paperwork, but it is on Google and so forth, so that the ambulances can find their way to this property. Okay, so seeing no other people interested, we'll call for a roll call.
Shall the city council change the name of a certain portion of Prospect Avenue, running from Heysel Avenue to 394 Prospect Avenue to Prospect Place, in accordance with Section 12.04.020 of the Revere Revised Ordinances? Counselor Janino?
Yeah.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso. Counselor Guanasso is absent. Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, the name change is official. Calendar item number four, hearing called is ordered on an ordinance further amending the revised ordinances of the city of Revere relative to road control.
Any proponents, people in favor? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents, people opposed, hearing and seeing none, close that side of the hearing. Counselors, Counselor Sorino?
Thank you, Mr. President. For the sake of time, since I described this at our last meeting a couple of weeks ago, I will refrain from commenting tonight, but hopefully it'll, I don't know if it'll be assigned to committee now, but hopefully we'll get to vote on these changes relatively soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? Hearing and seeing none? Legislative affairs.
Calendar item number five, hearing called is ordered on the application of Robert Ainello, 727 Revere Beach Parkway, Revere, Mass, seeking permission from the Revere City Council to reconstruct and modify a pre-existing non-conforming structure in use, which will be a two-story building utilized as two commercial units for electrical contracting companies or similar businesses with professional offices, including indoor parking and indoor storage of equipment and supplies at 727 Revere Beach Parkway.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Proponents, people in favor?
Hi, good afternoon, counselors. My name is Carrie Ann Green. I'm an attorney with Ambrosio Brown with an address of 14 Proctor Avenue. My client, Robert Ainello, submitted a letter requesting to withdraw his application without prejudice. I believe that was March 8, so I'm here tonight to respectfully request that the council allow that.
Great, I think we can act on that, but we have to go through this public hearing. So any other proponents? Proponents? Hearing, seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents, people opposed, hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Counselors? Hearing and seeing none, we're done with that, so.
Motion to withdraw.
Roll call.
Shall the city council allow the petitioner to withdraw the application without prejudice? Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, the application has been withdrawn.
Thank you.
Calendar item number six, hearing called is ordered on the application of Core States Group, Alan Roscoe, on behalf of and with permission from record owner, 9-Gallon Street, Suite 117 Watertown, seeking permission from the Revere City Council to allow for the erection of more than one principal non-residential structure on a single lot to enable the appellant to construct a bank at Northgate Shopping Center, 339 Squire Road.
Proponents, people in favor?
Mr. Roscoe, he just signed on, and I have to find Emilio.
Be with us a minute. Here's Emilio. Okay, proponents? Who are we going first? He just come up on my screen. Emilio, you're out there, here he is.
Good evening, folks. This is Alan Roscoe, I'm here. I think Emilio is trying to unmute, or maybe he needs permission.
Okay, Alan, hold on, we've got Emilio, we're just trying to bring him up.
All right. There I am.
Good evening. Name and address for the record, sir.
My name is Emilio Fegarito, 7-Dollar Street, Norchester, 02125. President Zambudo, distinguished members of the city council. I appreciate the opportunity on behalf of the applicants in this matter, we're seeking special permit authorization to erect a approximately 3,300 square foot building within the premises of the Northgate Shopping Center. The building would house a full-service Chase Bank branch. The proposed use allowed as a right use in HP zone, and there are zero issues as regard any dimensional FAR or lot coverage requirements. Under Section 1724.025 of the code, however, permission for counsel is required any time more than one principal non-residential structure is proposed to be erected on a single lot. Entire shopping center is made up of multiple lots, but the lot in question, parcel 6A, consists of almost 900,000 square feet. Currently existing on that parcel are the 194,000 square foot main building, which houses businesses such as Burlington Coat Factory, CVS, and Petco. The proposed bank, roughly a 3,300 square foot structure, would be located between the existing freestanding Uno's and McDonald's, and is smaller than either of those two buildings. The parcel also contains several other smaller existing structures, including the Taco Bell, Pearl Vision, as well as a small Eastern Bank and an ATM. The development of the bank would require the provision of 17 additional parking spaces for which sufficient space exists on the, on the 900,000 square foot parcel. We respectfully request your support, your support in this matter, and are prepared to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, sir. Any other proponents? People in favor? Seen him? Hearing and seeing none, I'm going to close that side of the hearing. Any opponents, people opposed? Hearing and seeing none, I'm going to close that side of the hearing. Counselors, Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have, I have.
All right, I'm letting, I'm letting ladies go first, but.
Thank you very much, and I really appreciate.
I didn't call the ward counselor, that's, he's mad at me now.
No, I just want to say, and I don't know if it's up to date or not, but there is a communication from Frank Stringi, the community, community development, and he said this plan has been denied for the following reasons. Ashley, do you have that letter?
We do, but we're going to go through the hearing anyway, but I'll let the, I'll let the clerk read it.
Okay. Ashley Melnuck? Do you want to have Ricky speak, and then?
This is part, this was received by the city council, the denial letter, it's requirement of site plan review, I'm sorry, for special permit applications. Do, you want me to read it?
Yeah, do you want to read why it was denied?
Sure, this plan has been denied for the following reasons. One, in accordance with Section 1724.025 of the Revised Ordinances of the city of Revere, non-residential structures may be erected on a single lot, may not be erected on a single lot, other than by special permit of the city council. And two, non-compliance with Section 1728 with respect to stacking lanes. For all drive-up windows shall be a minimum of 200 feet in length, and in no such instance move on to the onsite parking circular lane. And that's what they are applying for in front of the zoning board of appeals.
Okay, so, so we're going to continue this, we're going to continue this hearing, and after it goes to committee, they have to file for a ZBA variance. Okay, so there we go. Okay. Counselor Sorino? I know what you all want, and I apologize for not calling you first, but I saw you in.
No.
Ahead of you.
That's, that's perfectly fine, Mr. President. So I am in support of this project. I do think that having a Chase Bank in Northgate will add even more character to Northgate. I think Chase Bank would be a welcome addition. You know, I don't want to say that it's a better bank than most other banks, but Chase has a good reputation, and I think it will add, it'll be a good tenant. With regard to Frank's communication, I'll be honest, I was unaware until tonight about that communication, but it seems like this is what's going for the ZBI, in which case I am in support. So if we could maybe just wait, you know, to have this more productive conversation in subcommittee, I would appreciate that.
Well, thank you, but it automatically goes to subcommittee anyway, and so by the time it goes to subcommittee, the ZBA will already have voted on. What's that? Okay, we don't, there's a potential that the ZBA, boy, we're really, we're really, we've got to be very precise here with the clerk. Counsel Rotundo?
Thank you, Council President. I agree with Counselor Sorino, hopefully, as you were trying to put as eloquently as possible, that the ZBA can get through this issue and present it back to the council accordingly. This clearly looks like an issue of possible variances or some type of geographical issue, but I agree with Counselor Sorino, this would be an added plus to the Northgate Mall. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? I don't, I don't think I see hands. Okay, I was, oh, I'm sorry, Counsel McKenna?
Emilio is raising his hand. Counselor Zambudo?
Okay. Emilio, you want to talk to us?
Yes, if I could just clarify, I would like to indicate that the letter from Frank Stringi does not represent an opinion on this matter of the Site Plan Review Committee, that the denial letter is a predicate to our being able to apply to the appropriate agencies of the city for relief. He mentions two items, one of which is within the purview of the city council, and that has to do with the fact that we are seeking to construct more than one building on a single lot, and that is the issue that is before you separately, distinctly, on a separate track, there is the other issue of stacking lanes, and we have filed appropriately and are on the agenda for this Wednesday for the zoning board of appeals. Those are two separate issues identified by Mrs. Stringi, and in one case, the city council is the arbiter, that's the question, the two buildings on a single lot, and in another case, the zoning board of appeals is the arbiter, and that has to do with stacking.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate it, we know that, that we're dealing with the special permit here tonight, and the ZBA will deal with their thing on Wednesday. So if there are no other people that want to speak, we'll, oh, I see John Powers has his hand up. Counselor Powers?
I want to, I'm not speaking on that particular issue, I want to speak on something else, on a point of personal privilege.
Yeah.
If I may, and.
When we're finished, I'll call on you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Thank you. So bottom line is, this goes to zoning, and we'll see you soon. Zoning. Am I a little too loud for you, Counselor? John Powers, point of personal privilege?
Thank you, Mr. President. As you all well know, there is a question before us this evening regarding a project that is being proposed for the G&amp;J Boatyard site in the Point of Pines. There's been a lot of, is that fellow still on here, the fellow speaking, the most speaking? Do I need to push something different? Well, anyway, I suppose you can hear me, correct?
You have the floor, sir.
Okay, there we go. Okay, now here I am. So there's a lot of information out there, some of it's factual, some of it's very disingenuous. And I'd like to comment on that. First of all, I'd like to tell you a little about, I seem, I seem to be the target out here, so I'd like to tell you a little about what's been going on. There's a project proposed for the G&amp;J Boatyard site. There have been four members, four meetings, rather, with, I believe, nine, 10, maybe 11 members of the Point of Pines community. Some are from the, as we call the Point of Pineside Rice Avenue, and some are from the Boatyard. We had, we had four, four meetings. One was November 12, one was November 19, December 3, and December 10. And anyone that missed those meetings, and I think, I think they're worth watching, because you can get an idea of what everyone's position was at those meetings. I've already talked to Kabel. Who's Alan Roscoe?
Point of order. Mr. President, Counselor Powers has the floor. Can we fix the technical issues, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Rotundo.
Counsel Powers, continue, we had a little glitch there, that's, but I think we resolved it.
And those meetings, I spoke with Kabel this evening, once I give him a date, they will be run several times, so that everybody has a know, an idea of who said what and when they said it, and what their feeling was with regard to the, the proposal, okay? Some of the questions that were brought up by people that were appalled. Some of the questions that were brought up by, uh, people that were opposed to it were that they were going to, uh, be an influx of people, uh, coming over to the Rice Avenue private beach. I spoke with the developer, and as a matter of fact, he told me they're putting in a very large swimming pool there for the residents of that, uh, project, if in fact it is approved. Other people complained about the height of the building, okay? Well, the height of the building is approximately ten feet higher than the proposed building that's there now on the site. So, uh, any, uh, vision that would be blocked, if at all, would be just ten feet over that building that's there now, which would be coming up, coming down, rather. Some of people, some have talked about, uh, all different, all different things that really were not as significant as getting a project done there. Now, I know some people don't like.
Counselor, we, we lost your internet for a second here, sir. John.
Yes.
We lost some of your internet, you're going to have to say that last sentence.
Uh, we, we all know that that site currently as a tow yard is not only, uh, terrible looking, I don't know why this, I keep losing on this. I got something up here now that says scheduling. Can you hear me though?
We can hear you, Counselor Powers.
That's the main thing. So we all know that that site right now is generating sixty thousand dollars, and it's a terrible, terrible looking, uh, area with that tow yard there. One fellow suggested to me that he likes looking out over there, and my answer to him was, well, you must enjoy looking at, uh, junk cars, there's about seventy of them over there, and, uh, tow trucks. However, more importantly, sixty thousand dollars if that site is developed under the proposal that's before us would generate one million dollars a year, nine hundred and forty thousand dollars more in tax revenue to the city. In addition, it would generate five hundred thousand dollars in INI money. Thirdly, it would generate, to the citizens' investment trust, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which could be used for, uh.
John, we lost your audio again. Counselor.
Getting seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in building permit fees. Now, that's an awful lot of money. It's a lot of money, particularly when we're looking at probably three or four years from now, bonding a brand-new high school which is sorely needed for the city of Revere. And to have a million dollars every year coming in to set off some of our debt service, I think would be a positive thing. Now, there may be those who, I, one person said to me they'd rather have the site stay there. Well, that's not going to happen because unless they go over to Nahant with a check for eight or nine million dollars for, uh, the owner of the property, uh, and every summer clean the property and pay sixty thousand dollars a year in taxes, that's not going to happen. That property has to be developed. So what do we want there? We want something that's not, uh, intrusive into the neighborhood, and think about it, we've all been down there, if you staff and you looked at that site, not only is it a disgrace, but I think unless you are geographically aware of the city of Revere and the city of Lynn, you might say, wow, look at that project, it's in Lynn, it's not Lynn, it's in Revere. It's something that needs to be addressed. We have a program, a proposal before us. There were ten, uh, nine or ten members of the committee when we met on those days that I mentioned, and one of them who was signature to the flyer that went out this weekend said, looking at the plan, I, I love it. I think that we have now a lot of the things we were looking for, uh, integrated into the proposal. Now, and that was in, uh, December third, so now we're almost four months later, and the same person is putting out, uh, information that's negative to the pro, to the project, okay? They say they want another meeting, or I want another meeting too. But the meeting I want is the design meeting, which is going to take place probably a week and a half to two weeks after the Easter season. There's going to be a design meeting. And then after that, whatever we vote tonight is not a finality. What we vote tonight will go to site plan review, the police chief, the fire chief, the city engineer, the director of, uh, public works, and others, okay? Frank Stringi, who, Frank, I trust, I trust with my life. He's done a fantastic job, and he's very well experienced, and he knows what should go there, okay? Aside, aside from that, again, I've had a lot of people throwing out innuendo and, and crazy things, okay? And I'd like to point out, uh, several things since I've been on the council with regards to, uh, zoning, and an issue that was brought up about the fire station not being started, which by the way, I have spoken to the fire chief, and right now, uh, they're waiting to get the asbestos going, and shortly after that, that fire station will be demolished by the end of April, if not sooner. And I have his word on that. A lot of people think that, you know, well, it was slow-going, it was slow-going, we had a pandemic, and I want to commend Chief Bright, his deputies, and the entire fire department for the services that they rendered to the city of Revere, uh, regarding the pandemic, inoculating people, traveling around, making sure things were happening that should be happening. So I want to commend them right now. And I also would like to mention that I've had.
Counselor Powers, we can't hear you. John, we can't hear you, you have an internet problem.
We wanted to see what they were putting. You can't hear me, you can't? Hello?
We can hear you now. Keep going, we can hear you.
Yeah, the chief, the, the chief and I wanted to know, particularly the chief, what was going into new fire stations in the metropolitan area? Because you don't want to build a fire station and find out that maybe you should have put a decontamination room on the first floor so that they wouldn't have to carry, uh, on their clothes that decontamination, uh, up to the, uh, where the, the living areas, where they sleep. Now, with that said, I'd like to address a couple of things that have been brought up about my service as a city counselor. When I was elected first, okay, one of the things that I was very strong on was a zoning change in the Point of Pines and the Oak Island area, a change in the table of uses in the RA district. And specifically what that change brought about, and I also want to thank my colleagues on the council for supporting that, what that change brought about was no two families, single families only. So there's no one in this city that can say I was out there pushing for two-family homes. That's number one. Number two, just recently, about three years ago, after many attempts by private developers to put a high-rise, forty, fifty, sixty units down on Mills Avenue at the boatyard, we.
Counselor Powers, you're muted. He's not muted, his internet is in and out.
Also, also.
John, you got to try to wrap this up because your, your internet is going in and out, and we can't hear you, so try to get to the final points, please.
Yeah, I am, I am, I am. Also, uh, we have a new pump station on the Lynn Way, which former mayor Tom Ambrosino was gracious enough to expend the money at my request because people were getting sewage in their homes constantly. The boatyard down there now, now owes a hundred and thousand dollars in excess of, uh, fines because I forced them to clean it up. I'm very proud of some of these things I've done, okay? And that includes the, uh, the fire station. El Vega, at the mayor's request and my request, just spent four hundred thousand dollars overdoing Gibson Park. So I don't think that the Point of Pines has been neglected in any way. As a matter of fact, I, I think we've done great things down there. When you consider, and, and I've heard some comments made about, well, the pump station isn't going to, uh, handle the, the sewage. It is going to handle the sewage. When Frank Stringi sat down with myself and designed, and he designed that pump station to the best of his ability, it was included that any of the land down there would be looked at for possible developments and being, uh, in that handled, uh, in that, uh, fire, fire station, uh, that pump station in, in an adequate manner. So a lot of disingenuous comments going on out there. The, the developer, people are saying three hundred units. Well, let's, we don't make that determination, site plan review makes that determination. All, all, all we do is allow the district to be changed, so they, they can put apartments down there versus tow yads. They can also put restaurants down there and other things. That's what this vote will do tonight. The waterline and the pump station, it's part of the agreement. Yes, can you, can you hear me, sir? Yeah, I can hear you. Anyway, the waterline and the pump station, uh, would be, uh, handled with, with regard to expenses by the developer, not by the city of Revere. And one other comment I'd like to make, the city of Lynn, St. Mary's Church, has a, a row, uh, program down there, and that's one of the things that I'm looking to put at the boatyard, and I have a, an agreement, a verbal agreement, that the boatyard will be purchased by the city of Revere at a reasonable price so that no further threats of development can happen down there. These are things that I would like the citizens, not only of Point of Pines or Ward Fire, the citizens of Revere, to know. I have conducted myself in a manner befitting the city of Revere's legislative body. Anytime I voted on anything, it was always in a positive way for the, in a positive, uh, manner for the citizens of this city. So anybody that wants to talk further about that, my phone number is available, I don't hide anywhere, and I don't duck any votes. If I think a vote is good for the city of Revere, I support it, no matter what the outcome might, might be of the opposition. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Counselor Powers.
I'm here, thank you.
Calendar item number seven, this is the, is the zoning subcommittee report from March fifteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Chairman Keefe.
Mr. President, uh, we had a few, uh, subcommittee meetings in regards to the agenda item in front of us. The zoning subcommittee, uh, voted out in favor of the riverfront overlay district with, uh, with amendments.
Where's the cheat sheet?
Roll call, Mr. President.
Audit on a second reading. As amended, all in favor, all opposed. All, audit on a third and final reading as amended, all in favor, all opposed. Roll call on engrossment and ordainment, as amended.
Counselor Janino.
Yes.
Voting yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Moravito.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfski.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
He's muted.
Counselor Powers, you're muted. Voting yes.
Counselor Powers, you have to unmute, please.
Unmute your computer.
I, I have, I'm voting yes, can you hear me?
Counselor Powers, voting yes.
Thank you.
Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Voting yes, Counselor Serino?
No.
Voting no, Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Voting yes, and Council President Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and ordinance further amending the zoning ordinances of the city of Revere relative to the establishment of the Revere Riverfront Overlay District as amended has been approved.
Motion for reconsideration that has not prevailed?
Suspension rules.
On suspension, all in favor, all opposed. Reconsideration in the hopes it does not prevail.
No.
Next item.
Next item on the agenda is the appointment subcommittee report.
Mr. President. Chairman Guanasso.
Mr. President, we had thirty applicants before us this evening, and I'm going to take them all by what they were seeking, what position they were applying for. And all the drain layers, Mr. President, I'll just read the names, they all were voted out favorably. I would ask that there are no objections from the members of the cit, the city council that we take them and vote them all as one. I'll read as follows. Caruso Corporation, Chaplin Excavating, Camden Construction, D and M Civil, Sean Farrell Excavation, Rapid Flow, Diaz Construction, Cavalleri Construction, Caruso and McGovern, R Sasso and Son, Mercurio Brothers, E.B. Rotandi, M.T. Mayo, and Spencer Contracting. They were all voted out favorably. I ask the city council to do the same. Thank you, Mr. President. Roll call.
Shall the city council confirm the appointments as reported by Chairman Guanasso? Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Moravito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfski?
Madam Clerk, as I stated, item twenty-five is a present for me.
Voting present, just for item number twenty-five, and?
Yes.
Yes, for the remainder?
Yes, thank you.
Counselor Powers?
You're on mute, John. You're on mute.
Here we go.
Counselor Powers on the committee report.
Yes.
Voting yes, Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, the appointments have, have been confirmed.
And might I add, wonderful job, Mr. Chairman, getting through all those appointments. Great job.
Next appointment, Mr. President, is the assistant harbor master. Paul Barasso as assistant harbor master, he was voted out favorably. I ask for roll call.
Madam Clerk.
On the appointment to assistant harbor master as reported by Chairman Guanasso, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Moravito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfski?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, the appointment to the assistant harbor master has been confirmed.
Thank you. Next is with our newly created Public Arts Commission, the following names, Naomi DiMaro, Rob Zertan, Jason Valetta, Kirsten Green, Ryan Harkin.
Ryan Hawkins, Erin McCarthy, and Joanne McKenna. They were all voted out favorably. I ask that there are no exceptions from the committee of the whole that we take them and vote as one, and I ask for a row call.
Shall the city council confirm the appointments to the Public Art Commission in accordance with Chairman Guanasso's report? Councilor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Keefe.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Council Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Sorino.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Viscanti.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Zimbudo.
Yes.
Yes, the appointments to the Public Art Commission have been confirmed.
Thank you.
In accordance with Rule 23 of the City Council Rules of Order, the following items are being reported out of committee with a recommendation to be placed on file. Calendar item number 30, motion presented by Council Rotundo that the city look into the feasibility of adding zoning to permit vertical farming within the city limits.
Please on file.
It's up to you.
No, I'd like to, I'd like to put it back and I'd like to speak on it.
Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. With urban farming and more importantly, with the new ordinance, I think this would complement that. Quite frankly, if we take a look at what happened during the pandemic, it is smarter to bring the ability to farm closer to people than it is farther away. More importantly, it's economically and environmentally more friendly. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor, Councilor Janino.
Thank you, Mr. President. I support this motion as well, so I hope it does go back into a committee. And also, I spoke with the clerk earlier today. There are several motions that are in the Public Safety Committee that are on the agenda that she can let you know, and I'd like to also keep those. And I've worked out a date and time to set up a public safety meeting with the clerk.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, back to committee.
Calendar item number 32. Motion presented by Council Rotundo that the city of Revere look into the feasibility of installing a camera and telephone in every playground and park within the city limits similar to the safety cameras and telephones on college campuses.
Council Rotundo.
Big shorts.
Oh. I'm sorry.
If we could refer back to committee, please.
Yeah, okay. And Council Janino wanted that referred back to committee. Okay, back to committee.
I'm sorry, I skipped over one here. This is calendar item number 31, motion presented by Council Rotundo that the city of Revere look into the feasibility of creating microunit zoning for 55 and older persons and disabled veterans.
Council Rotundo.
We could put that back into committee?
Calendar item number 33, motion presented by Council Rotundo that the city of Revere look into the feasibility of covering the cost of Narcan with any pharmacy in Revere.
Council Rotundo.
Placed on file.
Placed on file.
Calendar item number 34, motion presented by Council Rotundo that the city council request the president of the Chamber of Commerce to appear before the city council to discuss including Narcan and CPR face shields and first aid kits of businesses within our community.
Council Rotundo.
Placed on file.
Calendar item number 35, motion presented by Councilor Keefe that the city council request McMackin-Littleley Board of Directors to appear before the city council.
Request to keep. Request to keep that committee, Mr. President.
And committee.
Calendar item number 36, motion presented by Councilors McKenna and Sorino that the city council request a security presence during city council meetings once city hall is reopened to the public.
Council McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to have security in the chambers because of everything that's been going on lately. I think it would be safe for us to have presence of, police presence or security presence. So that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you, and who else was, Council Sorino? Who was, who was the other maker?
Yeah, I was.
Yes.
Council Sorino.
Thank you, Mr. President. If it could be recommitted to committee, I would appreciate that, too.
Remain in committee.
Calendar item number 37 was a communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of J. Pandella Construction as a licensed drain man. That was from previous season.
Oh. Remove it.
Can you mute him?
Placed on file.
Okay.
Placed on file.
Calendar item number 38, motion presented by Council Rotundo that the mayor work with the police unions in Revere to obtain body cameras.
Placed on file.
Calendar item number 39, motion presented by Councilor Keefe that the mayor request the DPW and the city engineer to amend the rules and regulations regarding curb cut permits.
Placed on file, please.
Placed on file.
Council President, calendar items number 40 through 64 should be placed on file. This is a moot point. These are expired special permit applications.
Placed on file. We have communications now. Okay, before I have the clerk read the communication from the CFO, this item is going to committee. It's not going to be discussed. It's, there will be a joint subcommittee of the Ways and Means and Legislative Affairs next Monday night, the 29th, at 5:00 p.m. And this is too important an issue to try to handle it in five minutes here. So this is not going to be discussed in any way tonight, but it will be very much discussed on next Monday night, the 29th, at 5:00 p.m. You want to read the communication? Madam Clerk.
Calendar item number 65, communication from the city auditor, Chief Financial Officer, relative to the adoption of Mass General laws, Chapter 32B, Sections 21 through 23.
Legislative Affairs and Ways and Means and Legislative Affairs.
Calendar item number 66, motion presented by Councilor Novoselsky that the mayor request the DPW to install an emergency parking van blue flashing light at the corner of Shirley Avenue and North Shore Road so as to be seen up and down Shirley Ave and North Shore Road and from Kimball Avenue and Dana Street.
Council Novoselsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I know winter's over this year for some of us, thank God. But looking forward to next year, and I'm starting early to try and add a few more blue lights that are more visible to the neighborhoods. So that's what this is all about, thank you.
The motion, all in favor, all opposed? So voted, I believe we have the mayor wants to address the council. Mr. Mayor, I apologize.
Good evening.
I moved on, I moved on without calling on you, I apologize.
No, no worries, Mr. President. I just wanted to hop on really quickly and go back in time a little bit to the overlay district that the council approved. And I just wanted to thank the members of the city council for their vision and their foresight on this, on this, really what will be a transformational undertaking that we have down there. And you're going back to the time in August or July or August when I made the pitch to the Commonwealth Seaport Economic Council that we should be looking and dedicating resources and time into that location and thinking about how we can improve that gateway into our city. And the amount of time and effort that was put in by residents, by city staff and by the city council, I just wanted to show my appreciation for the work that was done. And I also want to extend my appreciation and gratitude to the, to the members of the subcommittee who I think made the overlay district even better and put in some additional guardrails for the redevelopment of that site. And I want to thank, thank everybody for their support and again, for their foresight. I know sometimes these, these things can be difficult. And I appreciate the willingness for, for us to move forward and make what will be a transformational change down at the Riverside and the riverfront of the city. And Council Powers, thank you for your advocacy for Ward Five. As the son of a former Ward Five city councillor, I appreciate all of the tremendous work that you've done for the pines, for the Riverside, for the Revere High portion of your district and of course, Oak Island and the entire entirety of Ward Five. So thank you, thank you all. And I just wanted to jump on and show my appreciation for, for your support of our vision. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Now we move on.
Calendar item number 67, motion presented by Councilors McKenna, Sorino, and Janino that the mayor be requested to install a memorial plaque or marker at an appropriate location at the front of city hall in memory of Revere residents who lost their lives due to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Council McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we just came on the anniversary of the one year of the pandemic starting, and we've lost more than 500,000 people in the past year. A number of people were lost in Revere also. So I know we've done this for 9/11. We've got memorials for 9/11, and I think it would be wonderful to honor the people that have passed within the city and, you know, within the United States. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Council Sorino.
The mayor's on tilt.
Okay, we'll call on the mayor since Council Sorino doesn't want to respond.
I think he was on mute, he can, he can jump on. I'll defer to the councillor.
Council Sorino, where are you?
No, I, I'm right here, I'm right here, Mr. President, I'm sorry. Mr. President, so as Council McKenna said, we are approaching the one-year anniversary of the deaths in our community. And as of today, those deaths stand at 159. And let's hope that, you know, with the vaccine and with life getting a little back to normal, that that number will stay at 159, let's hope and pray. But I do think this would be a wonderful gesture to have going forward. So thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor, you want to announce the vigil, or what?
Yeah, so, Mr. President, thank you. I want to first thank the council for, for this idea, for this motion. We, we have a couple of things planned. Number one, there will be an interfaith ceremony tomorrow night. We've, you know, we're, we're still in the throes of COVID, so we're not asking that many people show up. But I believe the council's been informed that there will be a ceremony to just remember and reflect on the last year. Tomorrow is actually the, the first year or the year anniversary of our first resident who passed away to COVID. So we picked tomorrow as a, as a, as a time to reflect and, and think back on the last year and all the folks that we've lost. So that's one. And number two, Council McKenna and your new role on the, on the Public Art Commission, we're actually, we've started the conversation with some BU students around ways to, I don't want to say celebrate, but to have a space to reflect on how hard this has hit our community. And so I heard a bunch of different ideas from really inspirational young, young folks who took the time to, to think about how to incorporate art and incorporate some level of civic engagement to really show that our community is strong, that we've been able to weather this storm, and we've only done it together. So that will be something that we'll be actually handing off to the Public Art Commission really, really shortly. But that is something that's in the works. And we've been, we've been thinking about ways to really commemorate what's happened and how we can, again, reflect, reflect back on the challenges that we've all faced. So that's something that will be, will be happening. And I look forward to Council McKenna, your input from a, from a public art standpoint and really anybody's input on the ideas that were floated. But there were really some great, exciting, thoughtful ways of, of just showing the residents that, that they have a place to reflect on what's happened. So thank you again for, for the idea, and we really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Janino, I just realized you were also a maker of the motion, I apologize. Go right ahead.
President, I wasn't going to interrupt you, but my colleagues stated a lot of what I had to offer to them. I want to thank them for including me on this motion. And I'm excited to see what the commission comes up with. And I'm sure it will be a great memorial to honor all the lives that were lost during this pandemic. So great job to my colleagues, thank you.
Thank you, Council, Council Rotundo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a suggestion, and I'm sure you all have multiple opinions, but we have multiple languages in our community and people of different cultures and backgrounds that have all been affected. And if we could get their voices on this issue on video, you know, certain parts of our community have been affected by COVID more than other parts of our community. And I seen something online, actually it was in Spain, and it was just video documenting the lives of those that were lost and both remembering them and celebrating them. And if there's anything that I know about memorializing those that have passed, it's celebrating their life. And if we could do that within this process, I'd be grateful. And more importantly, I thank the councillors for putting this motion forward, and I fully support it.
Thank you, Council, Council Morabito.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to commend my colleagues. You know, a memorial plaque for those who lost their lives from coronavirus is a way to let their loved ones know that we care about our community. Not only that, we care about the people in our community. And memorializing them with a plaque, I think, is a great way of letting them know they will always be remembered and be part of the community. So thank you, I appreciate the motion.
Thank you, Council, Council Guanasso.
Mr. President, in 1918, when they had the Spanish Flu, as they called it in those days, they didn't ever understand that we would have another pandemic. But we all know that it happened. I applaud our city for the manner in which we conducted ourselves by the several sites that we had for testing and the several sites that we have now for vaccinating people who are in need. The message should go out loud and clear to everybody. Please get vaccinated and prevent any further deaths because what a tragic event to occur. When you're a senior citizen, you've taken care of your health your whole life, and this pandemic comes upon you, this very nasty virus that destroys families and yourselves. So again, this is, I look forward to seeing the plaque. And I'm very, very pleased that my colleagues, to put this forward to us, and I appreciate their efforts. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So voted.
Calendar item number 68, motion presented by Council President Zimbudo that the mayor request national grid gas to connect all homes on Yeeman Street to the high-pressure gas line located near the McKinley School, similarly to the gas line repairs made on Soul Street and Pearl Avenue. Over the past few months, deterioration of the cast iron pipes have caused multiple leaks and low pressure on Yeeman Street, leaving residents without heat.
I ask permission to speak from the chair here, I guess. Okay, thank you. It, it really speaks for itself. I mean, it's, that's what's going on down there, and it's really needed. And so that's why I put this motion in. So anybody else want to speak? On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? Oh, Council Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you're probably aware, there have been some replacements in there. They are working across the city to do a lot of these high-pressure lines. Something I have, I'm working on Ridge Road right now. But if there's a priority, and I know that there were a couple interruptions with water actually getting into the gas lines. lines, uh, presidents in there. So, I, I definitely am in favor of getting these, uh, updated, especially if it's going to become, you know, during the winter, it was really difficult if someone loses heat. So, I'd be in favor and thank you for bringing this. But I know that there is a schedule to get a lot of this done. So, thank you.
Thank you, councillor. I know someone, uh, very close to us that was affected three times during the winter. Uh, okay, Councillor Guanasso?
Nope, I, not me, Mr. President.
Oh, you got your hand.
I just dropped my pen.
Oh, you didn't drop your hand. Okay, Councillor Morabito?
Thank you, Mr. President. You, I th- I commend you for this motion. It's, um, it is completely unacceptable for any resident having to deal with a lack of heat. Um, I think the high-pressure gas connection should be of greater importance and a matter that has to be addressed immediately. Um, also, um, National Grid has been, uh, has to be held accountable when they repave our streets after digging them up. Some of the streets, uh, worked on are patched and unlevelled. The entire length of the street they work on ends up being a bumpy roller coaster ride. So, it's going for, uh, for, uh, going forward, they, they need to be held accountable on their work as well when they're repaving any work that's, any streets that are being dug up. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. And I, I might, uh, as a point of information, if you have a trench that, that was done by the gas company, they will come and redo it. And, and they have a way of doing it with a, a special type of, uh, patch that will make it smooth. So, just, uh, if, uh, if you bring those forward, we can, we can force them to do it. They, but they, they've been pretty responsive when connected, when called and told them about a particular street, they come out and take care of it. So, um, but your point is noted when they, especially when they're in construction, like right now off of Revere Street, there's a lot of, a lot of patchwork going on and it's a mess. But they will come back and, and finalize it, uh, in the spring. Thank you. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed?
Calendar item number sixty-nine, motion presented by Councillor Keefe, that the mayor and the city's public safety departments be requested to implement a public safety campaign to raise awareness and enforcement regarding distracted drivers and speeding throughout Revere.
Councillor Keefe?
Mr. President, um, I think we all share the same feelings. There's, you know, we, we want to make sure that our residents are kept safe. And there have been a number of high-speed accidents in Revere. You know, uh, Washington Ave about three weeks ago on a Sunday, and a car turnover, um, on a Sunday afternoon, a car into a building on Broadway. Um, and, and again, this isn't for a lack of effort from the city, but if we can use some of the city, uh, public safety money or resources that we may have to, uh, institute some sort of a public safety campaign, I think it'd be well worth it to touch base, obviously, on distac- distracted driving, uh, and, uh, speeding. It's, um, getting, it's spring, it's officially spring. You're going to see spring fever with people going out. Uh, people are starting to get more confident with, uh, COVID numbers going down. You're going to see the increase in people, uh, all over the road. And school is officially back in Revere, even though partially. So, there's students walking, um, to and from school and more often. So, I would really like to make and, uh, see the city, uh, work together with an emphasis on creating this public safety campaign as soon as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Serino?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I want to thank Councillor Keefe for filing this motion. I think it's a great idea. Uh, just last week, I was on Washington Ave. And Washington Ave seems to be like the Speedway these days. It's, it's ridiculous. I was stopped because there was a, a school bus van letting a child off or picking up a child, and an idiot behind me decided to go around because he couldn't wait. Um, and i- it's just, obviously, that's against the law. And, um, people are just not abiding by traffic rules in our city. So, I think it would be great if we could have, um, some sort of targeted program to try to really tamp this down and let people know it's unacceptable. You need to follow the rules of the road. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other councillors? Hearing seen none. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So voted.
Calendar item number seventy, motion presented by Councillor Rotundo, that the mayor look into the feasibility of providing funding through earmark or grant for a city historian. The goal of such motion is to foster knowledge and goodwill regarding the history of Revere, from its inception to who we are today. The historian would focus on, but not limited to, the social, economic, cultural, ethnic and historical changes through the years.
Councillor Rotundo?
Thank you, Mr. President. The great thing about history is that some part of it, it always repeats itself as author, uh, excuse me, Councillor Guanasso has pointed out with the Spanish Flu and the pandemic. However, in this particular case, um, it kind of comes on the crux of, uh, something that I was speaking to Chief Bright about recently. And I think it would be great to illustrate, uh, where we were as a community, how we became, the struggles that we went through and, and where we're going. I think, uh, as we have a museum in the city of Revere, now we have an arts council with a better way to kind of augment these two, uh, particular institutions with a city historian, if we have the ability to do so. Uh, most people might not know that at one point, uh, Native Americans lived down at Oak Island. And, uh, we were one, one-time part of Chelsea. We also played a particular part of the, uh, uh, revolution. And I think these things would be, uh, best illustrated through a historian. And, uh, I put that forward accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Morabito?
Thank you. I believe a position such as a city historian is imperative to keep in, in, um, our history relevant. Um, there's so much history about our city and so much for many to learn, including myself. Um, I think a point person as, as a his- city historian would be great for preserving the history of, uh, the city of Revere. And, um, I think it's just great to, if we could find funding for a position like that. So, kudos to my colleague, uh, for bringing this motion forward.
Thank you. Uh, I'm all in favor of, uh, teaching our, uh, young people history, that's for sure. Uh, there's a lack of it in the school system. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So voted.
Calendar item number seventy-one, motion presented by Councillor Powers, that the mayor and the city's legislative delegation request Governor Baker and the DCR to amend the parking plan on Revere Beach Boulevard, so as not to install parking meters on the Westerly Side from three twenty Revere Beach Boulevard to Cary Circle. Should be noted that councillors Janino and Serino are recused from this motion. And councillor Zambudo?
Councillor Powers?
You're on mute. John, you're on mute.
Can you hear me now? We can hear you. Okay. Uh, that motion is in reference to a, uh, a plan by the Department of Conservation and Recreation to put parking meters on the entirety of Revere Beach and other areas. I don't think it's fair or even reasonable to put parking meters in front of the residences from three twenty, which is the corner of, uh, Ocean, Ocean Avenue, Revere Beach Boulevard and Revere Street, down to Cary Circle on the Westerly Side. It just, it just isn't right. Many of the people who live in those buildings are elderly. They have a, a nurse or a caretaker that comes to visit them maybe once a week, maybe once a month, whatever the case is. They have sons and daughters and sisters and brothers and other relatives and friends that come to visit them. It's not right. It's not right that somebody should come home or come to visit someone and have to put, uh, four or five dollars in a parking meter to visit somebody for an hour or two. It, it, it's wrong. So, my motion, and I understand, uh, that the, uh, the legislative delegation really, uh, can't get too involved in this, uh, but I'm sure they, uh, they are in agreement with me that, uh, the, the mayor needs to call Charlie Baker. It's done every day and say, "Governor, this affects my city. Please put a stop to it." And all it takes is a call from the governor. I know, I've been there. All it takes is a call from the governor, to the DCR, to the commissioner and say, "Stop it right now. Do something else with the meters. Okay?" Thank you, Mr. President. Thank, thank you, councillor. Councillor Morabito?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I have been against parking meters on Revere Beach since it was a topic of discussion ten years ago, because I just look at it as another tax, uh, to our residents. Um, the state will put parking meters on the beach regardless of our wish- wishes. Um, I do believe we need our state legislators and even the mayor to make a call to the governor. Uh, it may at least convince the governor to look at amending the plan by not installing parking meters on the Westerly Side of the beach by three twenty Revere Beach Boulevard. I, I, uh, concur with my colleague want, with this motion. Uh, we need to have all hands on deck and put, uh, apply a little pressure on the governor to see if he can amend the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Rotundo?
Thank you, Mr. President. Since eighteen ninety-five, this eighty-four acre, uh, area has never, ever seen a parking meter, nor showed. It is a public beach where people congregate. Not the richest people in the world, not the poorest people in the world, but average people. And to put parking meters there is reprehensible in my book. More importantly, as was pointed out by Councillor Powers, uh, you have, uh, home care nurses and other caretakers that are up and down that strip on a daily basis over at the Satter House in particular. And there is nothing worse than coming out of someone's house after caring for them and finding yourself a twenty to fifty dollar ticket. So, I would hope that, uh, Governor Baker would, uh, consider, uh, not allowing the DCR to put a parking meter, uh, one, on Revere Beach until they do it up in Swambscott. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Guanasso?
Mr. President, a lot of people place in mind the same thing that they do at Hampton Beach. Now, Hampton Beach has paid parking for all the people who visit there, but they don't have any residents in the area. They have all commercial enterprises and private businesses and hotels and what have you, restaurants, all on the other side. We don't have that. We, within our wisdom and, uh, as a community, allow people to build condominiums there and homes on that, on the other side of the beach for their use. Now, we're going to charge them to live there? Not right. We're not the same. We're not the same as other people. And as Councillor Rotundo said, we've never, this is the first public beach in the country. We should set the example. And we're not even proof positive as to where the revenue goes that they collect, understanding that it goes to DCR. Does Revere get a fair share of that? If Revere does, okay, fine. Then be kind enough to leave the Westerly Side as was off. Keep from three twenty or, or where the new condominiums are going to be built, at the corner where the Bianch's used to be, all the way down to Cary Circle. Should be exempt. And so, that's all I have to say, but I think it's, uh, only a matter of fairness. And I think that that would be fair to our community. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, councillor. Uh, I see, uh, participant, uh, Eric Lindedekio.
Hi, good evening. Eric Lindedekio, forty-three Tapley Avenue. Um, this proposal by DCR to put parking meters on the beach is a disaster for our residents in Ward Five, particularly those living along the beach, as well as those that live in the Point of Pines. Where are these people going to look to park when they choose to try to dodge paying the fee? They're going to end up in the Point of Pines and that's going to create a bigger parking issue down there than already exists. I appreciate this being on the agenda tonight and I hope the city galvanizes against this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, I don't, oh, I see, uh, no, I don't see any other hands raised. Okay, on the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So voted.
Calendar item number seventy-two, councillor, council president?
Um, Madam Clerk, I'm withdrawing this motion. Uh, I put this motion on because it's been a tradition of the city council for some probably forty or fifty years, that anything, uh, that was put in a public building had to come before the city council. It turns out it's a tradition and, uh, it can't be found anywhere in, in our ordinances. So, therefore, I, I intend to withdraw this motion. But it's the same as, uh, we voted on, I, I, I forget how many, eighty, uh, drain layer licenses tonight, and, uh, there's nowhere, it's not listed anywhere in our ordinance that we should do that. It should not come before the council. So, this may be the last time we vote on, uh, drain layer licenses on the city council, because, again, it's a tradition and not an ordinance, just like placing stuff on City Hall. So, that's why I put the motion in and that's why I withdrew it. After some lengthy investigation from many people, including yourself, uh, we couldn't find it anywhere. So, that's the, the name of that tune. Uh, so, that motion is withdrawn.
There's a couple late motions. Calendar item number seventy-three, motion presented by Councillor Rotundo, that the city of Revere officially welcome back Revere resident Daniela Fernandez, home from Colombia.
Councillor Rotundo?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this is a little hot-wrenching story of one of our students that, uh, went to visit a family member in Colombia and unfortunately lost her green card. And for almost four months, had to fight through bureaucratic red tape through two administrations to get back to America, her home. And it really upsets me as to what she had to go through. One, on a human level, two, as a public official, but three, as a father of two daughters of Colombian descent. This could have been my daughter. And it infuriates me that it took so much time for Daniela to be reunited, reunited with her family. And I would like the city, the mayor particularly, to welcome her back officially. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the motion? All in favor, all opposed? So voted.
And last late motion presented by Councillor Rotundo, that the mayor provide the Revere City Council with an update on the boatyard located on Thayer Avenue to include the following: the status of the appraisal, if the purchase price will exceed three million dollars, when will the city be purchasing the property, and the funding source to be used.
Councillor Rotundo?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, quite frankly, this is part of the master plan, uh, which we voted on and so forth. Part of that master plan is in particular, this boatyard that is owned by, I believe, a gentleman up in New Hampshire. And it is part and parcel of the, the actual, uh, master plan and the amenities that are to go with it. So, I'm just, uh, trying to figure out, uh, if we're going to purchase it still, if we have the money in the pipeline. And more importantly, what is the funding source? Uh, because without this boatyard, uh, being purchased and the amenities thereof coming, some of them which I've been fighting for, for over ten years, um, I'd be pretty, uh, disturbed with that. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Any other councillors? Okay, I got a participant, uh, Eric Lindedekio.
Lindedekio, forty-three Tapley Avenue. Thank you, Councillor Rotundo. Uh, I know a lot of the residents down there are curious as to what's going on with the boatyard and, uh, beyond the scope of the Riverfront Development Advisory Project. Uh, it'd be good to get some of this information, really understand what's really going on down there. So, I appreciate you, uh, putting this motion in. Thank you.
Thank you. No one else on the motion? All in favor, all opposed? So voted.
No further business, Mr. President.
No further business. Uh, we have a very important subcommittee meeting next Monday night, the twenty-ninth, at five PM. The next regular council meeting will be April fifth. Stand adjourned. Stand adjourned.